Well, let's go ahead and call to order the Village of Riverside's Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting of Monday, December 21st. Please call the roll.
Chairperson Mateo?
I am here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Henigan?
Here.
Commissioner Marhul?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Absent our Commissioners Pelletier and Matthews.
We have a quorum. Thanks, everybody, for being here. It is the final official village meeting of 2020. Attorney Morris, you have a couple items for us.
Sure. In March, Governor Pritzker issued a statewide disaster declaration in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Subsequent disaster declarations have been issued by the governor since that time on a monthly basis, the most recent being on December 11th, 2020. Chairperson Mateo has made a determination that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent in light of the ongoing disaster and therefore pursuant to the amendments made by the Illinois Open Meetings Act and Public Act 101640, this meeting and public hearing are being held electronically. Can all the members hear each other and me?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you're having trouble hearing at any time, please, please let the chairperson know.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting minutes of November 23rd, 2020?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner May got in there first just by a second. Any edits? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I don't see any visitors or citizen requests or communications, so we can move on to liaison, liaison report. Anything from the board meetings? Director App?
No updates at this point. We haven't really had anything go before them yet since your last meeting, so no village board update at this time. Our next meeting will be January 27th.
Let's move on to call to order the public hearing, PG 2007, a public hearing to consider an application from the Village of Riverside for special use for government-public service use to allow the installation of a radio antenna and 100-foot-tall support structure tower at the Riverside Public Works facility at 3860 Columbus Boulevard in the R1A zoning district. petitioner is the Village of Riverside. Please call the roll.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Commissioner May?
Right here.
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Here.
Commissioner Marhul?
There.
And Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Okay. Public notice was published in The Landmark on December 2nd and will be entered into the record as an exhibit. Anybody who plans to offer testimony tonight, please stand if you're able and raise your right hand. Is the testimony you're about to give true to the best of your knowledge?
It is.
It is.
Thank you. So Director Tab, I understand you're giving our staff summary first?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So a little bit of a summary behind this special use permit. The village approximately every 15 to 20 years does a water meter exchange program. And we are, we're into the 16th, going into the 17th year that the current water meters have been installed. The current meter reading platform is an AMR, Automatic Meter Reading Platform, and we are transitioning to an AMI system, which is a fixed-point reading system for the meters. Currently, we drive throughout the town and read the meters once every two months. And the proposed technology allows us to read all the meters at one time and, if need be, up to four times per day. So we're able to gain a lot more knowledge on the water use and what would help us point out and hopefully eliminate a bunch of water leaks and inflated usage and so forth that residents may not. In order to do this AMI-type system, we need a fixed point at an elevation of heat that was determined through a prop study or propagation study by a couple of water meter suppliers. And in order to do so, we have proposed the installation of a 100-foot communications tower at the Public Works facility for the purposes of this in conjunction with a fixed point-to-point antenna with the village hall, which would improve the speed of communication that the Public Works Department experiences for its software. Currently, we have a fairly delayed use of village-provided software. We recently installed a pretty data-dependent platform for various village day-to-day functions, and this would improve the speed of that software. So it's a multifaceted use, water meter reading and a communication point. So the, I want to say it was early in the spring, and as recently as this past Sunday, the fire department erected a 100-foot aerial ladder to mock up the, what a tower would look like. Hopefully, some of you had the opportunity to take a look at that. I believe Director App does have a couple pictures pertaining to that. So these are some photos taken from Riverside Road, approximately from gauge. And as you can see where the little red arrow is, there's not much to be seen other than a vertical stick that resembles a branch on a tree during, obviously, the months. Trees do have leaves. You wouldn't be able to see much of anything. But, you know, for purposes of this, there's another one that if we were to zoom in, it's just a little tip of kind of the tree line there. And the diameter of that ladder at the tip does fairly accurately represent what the diameter of this tower would be, approximately three feet at the tip. So that would be kind of the view from Riverside Road. There are obviously multiple angles, and, you know, I'm not sure where those of you that viewed it were standing from, but that's a fair, fair photo of what it would look like there. So the proposed tower would be handled and installed by Urban Communications. We have Ed Urban from Urban Communications online with us tonight. This company is a kind of a one-stop-shop turnkey operation for communication tower installations. They handle the permitting, the licensing, the installation, the foundation, soil testings, pretty much everything that would need or is required for the installation of a communication tower of this height and larger. But, you know, per the studies, we only need to be 100 feet to read whole village. So that's where we're going to be at. So if any of you throughout this presentation have any questions pertaining to the technical side or, you know, the radio side of it, he is the guy for that. So I believe Director App can go through the formal end of this presentation.
Yes, so I can give the staff report here. We are seeking a special use for government-public service use to allow this installation of these radio antennas and 100-foot-tall support structure at our Public Works facility, which is located at 3860 Columbus Boulevard. That property is zone R1A, and government and public service use are classified as special uses in that zoning district. The proposed location for the use at the existing Public Works facility is located on the southwest side of the Displanes River. I'm going to try to share my screen, pull up the site plan. Let's see. Here we go. So as you can see, Columbus Boulevard is here on the south side of the river, and the proposed tower is going to be located between two accessory buildings that are on the Public Works site. It will be approximately 30 feet from the west property line and 70 feet from the south property line. The Public Works facility is generally surrounded by tree lines and forest preserve, which will help screen the tower from adjacent nearby residential properties. Additionally, you have the Displanes River in the east, which provides considerable separation from residences and minimizing the visual impact of the tower. The purpose of the tower, as Director Tab went over, is to provide a single-point water metering system and a point-to-point communication system with the village offices for our various softwares for day-to-day business with the village and direct connection with our village server. The existing tower here at the village offices does not have sufficient capacity for additional antennas. Therefore, the village did have to look at alternate locations. The proposed location was selected because it afforded full coverage of the village at a height of 100 feet. We do have the propagation study. Let's see if I can switch my screen here so you can see how, how much of the village is covered by that. In your packets, that would have been sort of the greenish-looking map that was provided. The green area is the area that is covered by the antenna at the 100-foot level. This proposed tower and the antennas are for government use only. This will, tower is not going to be capable of holding personal wireless communication facilities. It is going to be 100 feet tall. It's a three-legged, equilateral triangle shape that's got a three-foot face, as Director Tab said. So it's going to have a fairly minimal profile. It's a steel structure that can be left plain metal or painted white and should be able to blend in with the skyline, further minimizing visibility. As I said, the fire department did do a demonstration of this, and the announcement of that demonstration was put in a letter that was sent to all of the property owners that received a public notice. So they were all aware that this demonstration was going to be going on yesterday between 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock, and we did have the pictures to show you from that particular study. Mr. Urban has also provided some pictures of existing towers at other locations, which I'll show you now so you can kind of see what these look like. Again, this will be between two accessory building structures on the Public Works site, so it won't be overly visible to people outside of the Public Works facility. And there's kind of a view of the whole thing. As you can see, you've got the antennas up here on top, and then an additional antenna, which we would have the additional antenna for the point-to-point communication with the village offices. And there's another picture of the top of the tower. And this is the pictures from the demonstration. And here's similar antennas to sort of what would be used for that water meter system that would be mounted at the top of the tower. So in your staff report, you do have the findings of fact or standards that are supposed to be used when looking at a special use. And we have Mr. Urban here to answer any specific questions you might have about the tower, as well as Director Tab regarding the need for this additional public use at the Public Works facility. And I'm also here to answer any questions that you have. Just for a matter of note, Chairperson Mateo, we have not received any communication from the public. I've not received any emails, and we did not get any comments through the mail or in the Dropbox.
You read my mind. That was going to be my next question. All right. Commissioners, questions?
I don't have any questions exactly that I can think of, but I wanted to thank staff for setting up that demonstration. That was incredibly helpful to visualize what this will actually look like from the Riverside side of the river, so I appreciate that.
The tower is 100 feet, right? Would there, would there be a possibility of raising that height if additional antennas are desired in the future? Or do you not need to raise it? I mean?
You're muted.
Oh.
Director Dan is muted.
Oh.
Sorry about that. Ed, you want to take that question? I believe from the photos, it does look like it can be extended.
So the tower itself is 100 feet. You're going to be mounting the omnidirectional antennas at the top of that, so that would give you your, your coverage necessary. In theory, yes, the tower could be extended with additional 10-foot sections. Quite frankly, I think that's probably unlikely that you would have a need to go any higher than 100 feet for additional future capabilities. The structural design is going to give additional wind loading or additional antennas should you need to use any communication antennas along the side of that tower. That's just a general thing that we, we would design into it for additional loading in the future if the village has multi-point communications. So the photographs that, that we supplied here are two towers we just got done constructing this fall for the Village of Buffalo Grove. One's at Fire Station 27, and the other one is at Fire Station 26 in Buffalo Grove. And those were part of a municipal-wide communications network where we put in high-speed backbone between all of those facilities, as well as the village hall and a number of other fire locations that had significant towers on already. And we also put in a multi-point system so that there, as the people could have access from their remote vehicle, as well as pump stations throughout the village could communicate back in with data for cameras. So you have some additional capacity there. I think that, you know, if we're looking at a tower that would be used for cellular, this is not that type of a tower, and it's probably not, you know, the, the use that you would be looking at down, down the line. But this is really built for a municipal communications tower, and I think should meet your needs going forward.
I was just wondering if the village does have additional needs in the future, if they can add on to this tower rather than, rather than trying to build another tower in another location. So it sounds like it does have that capacity.
Yeah, I think it certainly, these towers are built to add additional 10-foot sections on. We'd have to look at what the wind loading is going to be as you build your foundation. You have some very challenging soil conditions. We had our soil engineer, who I've known for 30 years and is really an expert in the area of difficult soil conditions in Illinois, and this is literally in, you know, in the riverbed. And he designed a very unique foundation system to allow us to go into the bedrock to, to mount the structure so that it, it stands up to the, the soft soil that's on top of bedrock, because it's really washed sand down there. So.
So it, it could take additional load, you're saying, because it's gone into the bedrock, so it could take additional load?
Correct. And we've, and we've engineered the, we told Sabre, the manufacturer of the tower, to put on what I think are appropriate additional loadings for future expansion, which would include some additional dishes. If you had point-to-point locations, you needed to connect into, as well as some multi-point small set form factor sectors. So that, as well as other two-way communications between municipal vehicles could be, could be used there. So yes, there, there is, there's extra capacity already designed into the, the engineering that we did. You know, we don't want to build a tower that's loaded at 80% capacity on day one. That doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Marhul, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So the special foundation design that they're talking about incorporates the anchors into the bedrock?
That is correct. It's called helical piers, and those go into the bedrock. They dig down to the bedrock. They will put the helical piers in, and that will be put, the foundation and the rebar will be attached to the helical piers. And then the, the pier, the pad will be there, and then you'll have a pier coming up to ground level.
That makes sense. So you said the, the antennas are going to stick up a little bit above that 100 feet?
That, that would be typically the, the case. You want to have them removed from the obstruction. Those look like they're probably 10-foot whips that are being proposed. So the one photograph of Station 26, which is included, that we provided, that photograph actually has a similar water reader meeting system that the Village of Buffalo Grove has, and it just is a very thin antenna on the top, so that, that stuff really blends in. When you're talking about a two-inch diameter, it really blends in quite well. One of the comments that I, that was made with regard to the painting, we really don't recommend that these be painted. They are, they are a galvanized steel. From a maintenance standpoint, to paint over galvanized steel, I think you open yourself up to a lot of extra work in the future. And the galvanized steel of a gray color really just blends right into the bluish-gray sky all the time.
Just as a point of clarification, the, the antenna that would go on top of this tower, the picture you saw, and one of the proposed suppliers, it would be a four-foot-tall whip right next to each other there. That's the one in the photo that you did see there. They're approximately three-quarters of an inch diameter by four feet tall.
This is more of a, maybe you guys have, Mr. Urban has dealt with this in the past. The telcos have been rather aggressive in their use of existing infrastructure to site their equipment. Is that something that the village can say no to, or is it something where the tower just really isn't designed to take telco equipment, and so it just becomes infeasible to them?
It's not, it's not feasible. The, the five, the latest 5G gear is extremely heavy, and it's not built for a tower like this. We actually put up a, say, three-carrier tower a number of years ago for the Village of Franklin Park. And if anybody has driven on 294 where the Franklin Park Water Tower is, the Franklin Park Tower that we put up is just about 10 feet shy of the height of the water tower. The, the carriers are all still on the water tower. Nobody, they've not let any carriers come onto their structure because they want to have a structure that they control, and they don't want to have, you know, all sorts of different carriers coming on the, on the tower and potentially having access and damaging some, you know, crucial communications. So there, there's, I don't think there's going to be any qual. The area that this is going in also is not a particularly hot area for the telcos. They want to get their 5G out, but they want to put it along the expressway so that they can service the cars. The forest preserve area is a difficult thing. I live in Payless Park, and the, I had to switch from AT&amp;T because they couldn't service me at my house. And it's not, you know, it's not in the middle of nowhere, but they said, "Sorry, you're off of LaGrange Road, and you're off of 123rd Street by half a block. We're only covering the major, major thoroughfare. Sorry."
Attorney Morris suggests something to add?
Sure. Um, yeah, even, even if the telecom companies were to propose a small cell, which would not be as heavy, a small wireless facility to go on here, because this is not located in the public right-of-way, but is instead on our property, our rights are a little different. We don't have to allow that. We only have to allow them access to the extent that we're allowing other similar attachments on, on this pole. So if we say we're just going to keep it to village-related antennas and communication devices, then we're not forced to allow the telecoms to come on this tower.
So to, sorry, this is not, not too far off base, but, so there's a difference in the legal definitions of village property between roadway right-of-way and actual municipal facility right-of?
Correct, correct. The Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act makes a distinction between public rights-of-way, including utility easements, and other types of village property.
Thank you. To mimic Parrot, Commissioner Henigan, I also saw the, the display with the ladder, and I was ultimately rather surprised at the fact that 100 feet is below the tree line when viewed from Riverside Road. This, I won't say it's innocuous once it's built, because I think it's going to look a little bit more dense, but I think it's relatively, for the purpose that the village is looking for, and the sighting, I think it seems to be appropriate.
I saw it also, and I agree. I think the only people that it could be irritating to would be the people right next to it, and if they haven't submitted any comments, then, then I guess they haven't, so.
Commissioner May, any thoughts? Questions?
No, I, I think that it's Commissioner Henigan and Marhul put it well, and honestly, it's the view right outside of Commissioner Marhul's front door, so if, if you don't object to it, Joel, then I don't, I don't see an issue.
I was originally prepared that I might need to and was questioning whether I might need to recuse myself, but I, as noted, I was pleasantly surprised. Thank you, Commissioner May.
That ladder replaced, it was actually approximately 30 to 35 feet east of where the tower would go, so it would be further from where you are. We couldn't put the, the back of the ladder truck in the proposed site where the tower would be, so we had to be off about 35 feet closer to you.
It, it hid pretty well in the trees. Once you knew where to look, it was, it was easier to find, but like I said, it did blend in relatively well, the ladder, that is, and that is, Director Tab, that is appreciated that you guys did spend the time to erect the ladder and allow us to see the impact.
Mr. Urban, could you briefly describe how the propagation study was done and what effect, if any, changes in tree canopy height will have?
We didn't, we were not involved in the propagation study. That was provided by the vendors of the meter reading system.
So the way that's set up is they take, each individual address has a GPS coordinate to it, and they feed that into a software program, and it determine, you set the height at which you're looking to read meters at, and it'll take into account through some LiDAR data, the tree canopy height, and it'll, you know, it'll forecast, in essence, with those GPS coordinates, the accuracy and the probability of reading any given meter. GPS coordinates, the accuracy and the probability of reading any given meter at those particular addresses. So as you see in the chart that Director apt head up or the photo, the green indicates a almost 100% accuracy. And I believe there is some yellow to the south, but that would be in lions. So it doesn't necessarily, you know, it takes a wide swath when it does the calculations, but it was based off of the Riverside addresses.
Director Tab, if I could ask, if you had only say 80% coverage, does that just mean you're getting 80% of the signals? And so?
Well, there's varying degrees of coverage. Obviously, the green is the best and the yellow is, you can still read the meters, it's just not as strong of a signal. And for those residences that might be, let's say, in a depression, you know, Riverside's fairly flat, so we're not too concerned about that. But if there is a meter that we're unable to read, we can put a repeater or so on the outside unit that would elevate a signal if need be. But the, one of the companies that was doing this propagation study, historically, they, with readings like they received when they did study, they didn't foresee any issues with any of the addresses in town, actually. And that's by using just, you know, the one antenna. There are some villages or towns that they do require multiple antennas, depending on the, how large the town is. But, you know, as small as Riverside is, at the 100-foot mark, they didn't foresee any issues.
Thank you.
Director Tab, I could see a direct benefit to residents faster detection of a water leak. But with this system, are there other direct benefits that you can foresee? Will costs be lower, given that staff's time might be reduced? Can you talk to us a little bit about how residents might benefit?
Sure. There's, it's kind of multifaceted. From a direct department benefit, we currently spend approximately three hours every time we read water meters by driving throughout the town. The reporting, once we get the reads, we upload them into a computer system and we produce what we call either non-reads or zero consumptions or abnormal usages. And then we spend approximately a week kind of working through those reports. We have to go into the field to verify certain things. And, you know, with an AMI-type system, because the meters are read four times a day, those reports and notifications are generated on a day-by-day basis where we aren't going to be spending a lump sum of a week where we're, you know, we're sending somebody pretty much to do water meter reporting and taking them off of other projects. So with this type of software, whoever's designated to do the follow-up, they would get a computer-generated report every morning and we set certain parameters where it would indicate a prospective or probable leak that would occur overnight, you know, when they're, in theory, nobody's using any water. So we can hit those things as we receive them and notify residents right away as opposed to, you know, because the current metering cycle is 60 days. So in theory, we could read your meter, we'll call it the first of the month, and on the second of the month, your residence has leaky toilet. And we may not get back around to read that meter for, you know, another 60 days. And in theory, your toilet would be leaking for 60 days. By the time we go through our reporting, we notify you, it may be up to two or three weeks after the meter is read itself. So, you know, we're talking a very prolonged period of time of leaks that occur where, with this type of system, because it reads it so frequently, we can set certain parameters. You know, if your toilet or, you know, whatever fixture were to start leaking, that day, we should be able to pick it up and notify you the following day as opposed to waiting, you know, 11 weeks potentially. So from a direct resident standpoint, that's great because it saves, you know, the resident money and the village, you know, potentially losing water. You know, there also is, if the village were to elect what they call a consumer portal function on the software for this meter-reading data, you know, to give all residents the ability to access a platform or a desktop-type setup where you can monitor your water usage and you can monitor your water habits. So you can potentially identify a leak within your home. Or if for some reason, you know, you think your usage is elevated as opposed to calling us and having us come in your home, you might be able to identify it either by doing a dye test on your toilet. Or, you know, maybe you just had some landscaping done or filled a pool and you want to track how much water you used. For that instance, you'd be able to do that using that consumer portal. So there's, from a resident standpoint, there's a lot of benefit, not only to monitoring water usage and perhaps altering water habits, but to identifying potential leaks in the near term versus waiting for the town to get around to reading your water potentially 60 days later.
This will require installation of new meters at each residence, right?
It would. We're trying to get ahead of the meter exchange program with this type of, you know, we have to have the infrastructure in place before we can institute that type of meter-reading system. So before we transition into a new style of meter, we want the AMI infrastructure in place so we can take advantage of that technology and offer that type of meter-reading.
Thank you. Some of you may know that Riverside was just, the river corridor in Riverside was just declared an important bird area. And some of these towers are problematic for birds when they're migrating because they get disoriented migrating at night and a lot of dead birds end up piled up under the towers. So I sent some questions to Director Tab on Friday. Two of the biggest issues with towers, particularly tall ones, which this one is not, are guy wires. Towers with guy wires have 16 times more fatalities than those without. And Director Tab said that this one will not require guy wires, perhaps because of the soil and type of installation that is going to result. Another issue is the constant red light at the top of the towers. Birds get disoriented with the constant light and then end up colliding with the tower. Simply changing it to a blinking light reduces fatalities 50 to 70%. And Director Tab says it's unclear yet whether or not a light is going to be required. But I would just go on the record as saying if we do have to have a light, if we can do what we can to try to get a flashing light instead of a constant red light, because again, it's right next to the river corridor where these birds are migrating. And I hope that we would want to reduce fatalities as much as we can.
So in regards to those questions, the first one, when we were kind of called specking out a tower, we, you know, we don't have the footprint for guy wires. So it was pretty important that we had a structure that wouldn't require them because we can't place the tower in the middle of our parking lot. We had to kind of scoot it over along fence line in between two buildings. So guys, guy wires weren't really an option. And then pertaining to the light, perhaps Mr. Urban can elaborate on that, but until we have the studies done through FAA, it is unclear as to whether we would require light. But in conversation with Mr. Urban, he doesn't think that we would need something, or at least there's towers in the area, similar heights, that do not have the lights. And he could elaborate on that if you'd like.
Sure. Typically, under 190 feet of elevation, a tower does not require lighting unless the FAA deems it's a hazard to aviation. And that would mean that it was in a direct glide path to the local airport. I think you're significantly far enough away from Midway that that's probably not going to be required. We put in the two towers in Buffalo Grove, both of which are significantly closer to Chicago Executive Airport than this would be to Midway. And neither of those required any lighting at all. So it's going to be a requirement through the process. If the tower is approved by the zoning and by the village, the next step in the process is we do a National Environmental Protection Agency review, which includes a process that is everything from excavation by archaeologists for any native artifacts at that site, through the environmental impact study that we do and the approval of the FAA, that there's no hazard to aviation.
Thank you. Other questions? Director App, we have a new attendee?
We do.
Director Tab, just a final opportunity. I guess one option could have been to stick with the same kind of meters that we've been using. And for the Department of Public Works, that is just not what you want to do, correct? The various benefits that you talked about?
We're looking to take advantage of the latest technology. You know, everyone seems, you know, from a customer service standpoint, everyone's moving in this direction because we can monitor water usage more frequently. We're not waiting for that 60-day read time. It would allow not only, you know, us to pick out leaks that are occurring, but we can also, you know, do final water reads. We can do those from the office. We don't have to go into people's residences. Tenant finals, we can do that from the office. We don't have scheduled appointments with, you know, whether it's realtors or tenants that are moving out or moving in, or landlords or wherever the case might be. Because every time property changes hands in Riverside, we need a final water read for a final water bill. And as of right now, we go, we have to because we don't have the option. We go to every residence and we go in the basement and read the water meter. Or at minimum, the outside of the building, if for some reason we can't access it, if it's a landlord tenant type situation. So for those instances, we can, you know, that alone saves many hours a week from staff doing other things. So that's definitely a plus.
I think also from just an operational standpoint with it, have the ability to provide them with the point-to-point communication with the village offices, it's going to mean that a lot of their day-to-day activities, even just logging into our ERP systems and things like that, is going to be a lot quicker process for them, especially when updates have to run and things like that. Because right now, there's a significant delay for them to get into the software, is to access the server, things like that, when they're trying to do their day-to-day activities. And being able to have that point-to-point communication will make them just being able to do business a lot more efficient.
I can truly attest to that. We have a very, you know, like I said, we have a very data-dependent software package that we installed about a year ago now. And it works great at the village hall when you're right next to the servers. But, you know, when you're across the river in the woods like we are, the, you know, we've had instances where we can't connect to the servers at all. So we can't use our software for that particular day. And, you know, we hope we can connect the following morning. But there are definitely instances where, you know, we have to make phone calls to the village hall just to get information off of the platform. So that would, you know, in conjunction with the water meters, that's, you know, definitely a benefit to staff.
Director App, is MJ an interested party?
I have not received any message from them, but if we want to open it up to public comment, we'll see if they have any questions.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, MJ.
MJ, do you have something you'd like to add?
I'm sorry, I just joined this forum. I have a quick question. This antenna that you guys are planning to install is, what, about four feet tall, my understanding?
Could we swear in the witness, please?
Oh, thank you. MJ, please stand if you're able and raise your right hand.
Okay.
You swear that, I guess, the testimony, the questions that you're about to give are true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we get your full name?
Sure. It's Mihai Ju-Gorano. I'm at 195 South Cove.
Thank you.
My only question about the antenna is that I would recommend that it would be made out of either stainless or aluminum, if that's possible, just for maintenance purposes and the fact that it won't rust. That's just a suggestion I'd like to run by you guys.
Once we do a select a manufacturer, I would be able to confirm that with them. You know, we don't have a meter provider picked out yet, but once we do have the infrastructure in place, we will get around to meter manufacturer selection. And that would be in the discussions from a maintenance standpoint, how heavily dependent is their equipment on maintenance? And I'm sure the, you know, what their antenna is constructed would probably come up in conversation.
That's great. I'm not that familiar with those products, but I would just like to suggest that. Because you always see these steel fabrications that are rusting after a few years. It's just the nature of the material.
Thank you.
That's all for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Missioners, other questions? If not, would somebody make a motion to either close or continue the public meeting?
Motion to close the public meeting?
Second. Unless Director Tab, do you have any final comments? Because once we close it?
Oh, I don't unless you guys have further questions.
Okay.
And we're actually closing the hearing. We don't want to close the meeting yet.
Right. Thanks for that clarification. So we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, public part of the hearing. Please call the roll.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Thank you. Christian Marhu?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Chairperson Mattel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to make a motion or do you want to have some discussion first before we get to the standards?
I had a question, a legal question, I guess. This is not a variation, right? It's a special use because of the footnote in the bulk requirements table or whatever that is. Is that correct?
Right. That's correct. Yeah, that footnote in the table talks about the building heights not applying to towers. So we're okay there. And if I could add, although this is not a wireless telecommunications support structure, we did kind of look to those standards for guidance and those limit the height to 110 feet, which this is below.
Thank you.
Make a motion for approval of special use for the tower?
Second.
And of course, that's to recommend approval?
Correct.
That was Commissioner Marhu for the second?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have seven standards. And apologies, I'm looking at a second screen that has my PDF. The first one is the proposed use is designated by the zoning ordinance as a special use in the district in which the use is to be located.
That's true.
Supported. The proposed use will comply with all applicable regulations in the district in which the use is to be located, apparently. The location and size of the proposed use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with it, the size of the site in relation to it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is located. What are your thoughts on that?
It's essentially an industrial item in the public works site. It's the adjacent land use is non-res. That's a tough one on the adjacent land use. I think Chairman Mateo addressed the, the bird issue and the nature issue. But in theory, we've been told that this will not be detrimental.
I think to the extent that we already have the public works building there, that this is as in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district as the rest of the accoutrements of the public works facility. So I think that standard is met. And I don't think there's any greater intensity. It's simply a matter of height, but there's not going to be any more activity involved with the fact that there's going to be a tower there, from what I understand.
Okay. D, the location, nature and height of buildings, walls and fences, and the nature and extent of the landscaping on the site are such that the use will not unreasonably hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of the adjacent land and buildings.
I think that's true.
I think Commissioner Miller already addressed this in her previous statement that we are talking about a relative, a public works site at which adjacent uses already know about that use. And it's already got the trucks and the busyness of the, the maintenance activities.
I think the existence of the antenna will not unreasonably hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings. I think that factors meant.
I have to say, when I drove over to Public Works from 39th Street, it was a little jarring. Then again, it's new and across the street, there are two towers. So it's consistent with what's currently there. E, parking areas will be of adequate size for the particular use, properly located and suitably screened from adjoining uses. And the entrance and exit drives will be laid out so as to prevent traffic hazards and nuisances.
I don't believe this one is applicable.
I agree. F, the proposed use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood.
Based on Chairman Mateo's comments about the other two towers being in the vicinity, I would agree that no injury.
I agree.
Any other thoughts on that one? And the last one doesn't pertain because there was no prior submission, no year has passed. Final thoughts? Please call the roll.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhu?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So as you know, we're recommending bodies will go to the village board. A second meeting in January, perhaps?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Urban, for spending your evening with us.
Thank you, it's a pleasure. Glad to assist you in making your decision here.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Director, and Director Tab, thank you. We have no old business. We have no new business information. We already have our next meeting scheduled for January 27th. Do you know if we have anything?
I don't have anything at this time, but we haven't hit the deadline yet. I know Commissioner Miller had emailed me and asked if we could give a brief update about the last steering committee meeting for the zoning update. So I don't know if you want to provide that, Sheriff Mateo, or if you want me to provide a quick update?
Go ahead, please do.
Okay. So last week, Monday, we had our second midi, meeting of the steering committee for the zoning code update that we're working with RTA on. And they went over the results of the virtual workshop with us and then kind of went through some of the zoning issues to get the committee's feedback on things like building height and setback and parking standards kind of in, in light of what some of the recommendations or comments had been as part of the virtual workshop. So we got through a few of the items, but there was still a few left to get through after that. So we will be having another meeting to get through the last few of the items. But things that were talked about was the potential for maybe going up to five stories, maybe along Harlem Avenue, maybe three or four stories along our in the downtown. There was also discussions about setbacks and having maybe minimums and maximums versus just maximums, depending on, on different areas. And also talking about a little bit more about parking. But that discussion, I think, is going to be continued with, with the next meeting to try to work through that a little bit more, along with a couple of other things like, like landscaping and things like that. So it was, it was a good discussion and it took a little bit of time. So there was still some more to kind of work through. But kind of working through some of those issues so that they can start writing up some amendments and get those presented to staff in the steering committee and then give an update to the village board. And once that happens, then it'll start through the public hearing process for, you know, the final review. So we're kind of working through those, those steps. At this point, we're probably looking at maybe a March presentation to the village board on a status update and, and update on where we're at with the text amendment. And then working for the actual application and text amendment, public hearing process. So hopefully adoption by the end of the summer. According to their timeline.
I've been really impressed with Mr., I'm going to get his name wrong, Vanadolik?
Vanadol, Vanadalock.
I'll work on that one. He really got into our code and knows, really knows the village at this point and knows each of the businesses and drilled down on the different parts of Harlem Avenue and what's where. And this is really exciting. Um, have, are we going to be getting a schedule of meetings for 2021?
Yes, so the village clerk has been working on that and getting it entered into the website and stuff. So once that kind of gets finalized, I will get that emailed out to you guys. So you have the, the 2021 schedule.
Okay. Before we turn it over to Attorney Mars, because I think we need to go through that again. Any final questions, thoughts?
All right. I will just say thank you, everybody, for bearing with me for 2020. I know it's been a little bit awkward doing meetings on Zoom and then doing some in person and being up in the auditorium and wearing masks and social distancing. So thanks for working with us and for being willing to volunteer your time. I know it's, it's been a difficult year, so I do appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Thank you, all commissioners for.
Thank you.
At some point, we'll be back in person and hopefully all vaccinated. For those who choose to.
Hopefully everyone.
Attorney Mars, do you need to question us?
I don't, we, we covered everything at the beginning, we're good.
Oh, okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Please call the roll.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhu? Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. See you next year. Have a great holiday.
Thanks.
Happy holidays, everybody. Bye bye.
Bye.